Meeting of the city council pending agenda Monday, November thirteenth, two thousand one thirty six. Call to.
Patrick.
Here.
Doley.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Calvall.
Here.
Renslow.
Here.
Gender approval, consent of gender approval minutes ten nine, two thousand twenty three. Meeting of ten twenty six, two thousand twenty three, approval of financial statements as of ten thirty one, two thousand twenty three. Approval at bills as presented. Motion. Move by Morgan.
Awesome.
Second by Doley. How do you go? Patrick.
Yes.
Doley.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yep.
Calvall.
Yeah.
Renslow.
Yeah.
Okay, sports complex, Jim Henderson.
Evening. Okay, I believe Christina passed out a kind of a brochure for this sports complex. Basically, all we're looking to do is just kind of establish a timeline for the completion of the different projects that were on the list. First one being the gravel or the new parking area. So what we have looked at, looking at. Page four, I guess. Large soccer field and parking lot. Basically, we're looking at going from the east, just east of the east goalpost to the east fence. And from the north fence to the south to the roadway. So the existing parking lot is roughly thirty thousand square feet. The new proposed parking lot would be approximately forty one thousand square feet. With shaping and grading and then laying in base rock and top coating with rock. And also putting a roadway or reestablishing the roadway up the north side fence all the way out that northeast corner gate. We have figures of basically fifty thousand five hundred to reshape all that, re-rock that. That may change just a little bit depending on the tonnage quantities once they get to spreading it. That roadway to the north going out will be a basically single lane twelve foot wide roadway. I talked to members of the soccer board today and they were actually kind of thinking that maybe using the existing. That roadway as an exit to alleviate some traffic issues, which.
Whose roadway is that? That's parallel with the railroad tracks. Is that Landis?
That is Landis. It's there's a there's a permanent easement through there.
Oh.
There is a thirty foot permanent easement through there.
So is that something that later on down the road that we would have to maintain raw?
Yeah, probably that that stretch of it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Does it need something now?
It probably needs graded now.
Just graded.
And like I say, this, you know, it's not going to be used again until spring now.
Sure, sure.
Then the other thing on the next thing on the list, I guess we can go to would be the lighting. It says redo the plumbing inside of that existing building. That's a minor thing that we've been looking at. Top coating of the gravel over the existing, that's something that we do every other year anyway. So that's nothing that's earth shattering. Lighting, item number eight. That's got kind of a high figure because we didn't know if we were going to be able to utilize the light poles that we have, which we are. I don't remember which page it's on.
Six.
Page six. Christina has marked out the locations of where those poles will will be installed. Actually, the schedule is starting tomorrow, we're going to put the piers in or get them dug anyway and ready to pour. Put the piers in for the poles. And then if the weather holds, we may go ahead and get the conduit in the ground with the assistance of the utilities. So that we can pull wire through and wire them up as they get as they get caught up or like us, they're busy too.
Is he. Pour these in?
No, we're in trencher.
Trench.
We're gonna. We're actually gonna hit a trencher for.
Oh, much.
Much more maneuverable and stuff to get trunched around. Uh, let's see. And then the bathroom updates, item ten, that's the old block football field bathrooms. We have not gotten to a point yet. We have not gotten to a point yet to determine the condition of them. So I feel it would be a little premature to make any decision on those at this time, whether we repair them and leave them, remove them. It's a little premature at this time to make that decision.
If you remove it, are you. And maybe you guys haven't discussed, but are you going to replace it or?
We have talked about, well, it was discussed, the possibility of possibly removing them and and maybe setting. Kybos there and and close them. You know, you can go to a lot of sports parks and they actually build a privacy fence around them. They're just exposed on one side for access and stuff, but it kind of dresses them up and stuff. I mean, you can rent Kybos for a lot of years for, you know, what we're looking at here for repairs.
Of course, you gotta see whether the water sewer even works on it.
Exactly.
And we go from there.
Yep. Yeah, I said it's a little premature making a decision on them right at the moment. That's just kind of the timeline where we're at.
Did you talk about the T-ball?
And then the T-ball parking lot to the south. We are going to haul in a lot of the millings that we have stockpiled at our South Pond. Haul those in and extend that parking lot to the east, back to where it should have been originally. And then that can get overcoated with rock. Once it's packed in, we'll overcoat it with rock.
Good point.
Was there something about the red shed? Did that get talked about?
I really am not up on whose sheds belong to who.
Okay.
Besides, you know, what belongs to the city, I don't know. There is one out in the to the far east that we're going to remove. It's an old shed that they used for football stuff for a long time. And it is very poor condition, very dilapidated. Dick cleaned it out during the community white cleanup, so we're going to remove the shed.
What about the electrical panel and? Or what was the other thing?
Was there concessions?
The water heater, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
You had talked about doing that in the spring.
Concessions and that'll be in the spring. Just to replace the water heater, it's it's front leak and then the electrical panel needs updated in that building. That's all I got.
Just add, so some of this was for the park out of the new complex. Okay, I guess. Let's find to the parts. Would anybody have some any concerns that I put together with recommendations for that at all?
No.
Or reach out to some people to see what, I'm trying to get moving on that as well.
I've got plenty catalogs and stuff too.
You've got America around to go out there.
Yes.
And then was it, I think we talked about, were you kind of waiting on B and K to shape, to stake that road so you knew how much road or how much park space you actually have?
They do have the the right of way of that road state, but we're in discussion right now on if they're going to. Level that north end of those lots out, where the street's going to go and where the park's going to go, if they're going to level that out with some of the soil that they have. We had a discussion last week. I don't have a response yet.
And you'll know like space wise, you know, like equipment and stuff like that.
They have the right of way state, so we know where where the road right of way is for that lot now.
Do you guys have like a committee out there in the housing?
Yeah, I don't know if we want to put one together or I don't know. I don't know what the best way to kick.
I didn't I didn't know if you had some neighbors out there. Neighbor, you know, you guys. Talk which one out there.
Sure, Dave and I will ask some questions out there.
Sure.
Ash, do you get a motion to approve Jim's proposal?
Yeah.
I'll move that.
Yeah, I just want to add a. Motion. I'd like to know more about the bathroom thing. If we're going to start talking about money here. If we're going to remove it or.
Until I get a chance for you to test the sewer and see what the viability of the sewer is, there is no water to it, so that's going to have to be. Dug in and tied into the line that goes down to the existing concession building. I've been in talks with Ben Stoffer, the water superintendent on that, but until we can determine those things, we don't know where we're at on that.
So let me rephrase that motion. So my motion wasn't anything money related. It was just the process and Jim's recommendation on how to move forward on the different projects and the timelines. It has nothing to do with the money because that's a different discussion and until he gets prices, there's nothing you can do on the money side of it.
Let me do the second. How do you go? Patrick.
Yes.
Doley.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calvall.
Yep.
Renslow.
Yes.
And I want to say a few things here. People are a little bit confused on how things are getting done at the sports complex. We have a soccer board. Laura Weber, Aaron McCollough, James Morgan, Claude, Mike Algren, and Randy Coyle. Original people that started trying to figure out what was going to happen out there with John Swinger, Dustin Capps, Tim Young, Randy Coyle, Art Boss, myself, Asher, Sarah, and Matt. So people know. And there's been a lot of things get done so far out there. The ash trees got removed, the stumps got ground out. Mason Hasty and Clayton Scott put a tremendous amount of time on the Jim Claver field. Chris Forrest painted the sign for the Claver field. We have the Ed Shaw Memorial Bench, Sarah Wolf Bench Flagpole Memorial. Gary Wolf did some electrical work for the shed. FFA Group planted twenty seven trees out there. I planted eighteen small oaks on my own. Casey Coyle, Randy Coyle, Mike Algren, Eric Weber. Recited, re-rupped the old shed, insulated, and have new shelves in it. I got hold of K and V originally to see if it welded on our four existing poles and put in an access hole for the wiring. Utilities supplied the eight new lights for those poles at no cost to the city. Utilities put two new lights on the Jim Claver restroom. Jim's crew has painted the four poles and the crossarms and the old flag pole, so we're ready to go on all that. Tim, do you have any comments since you were on the original? Discussion of this, Tim Young?
Yeah, 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 yes, sir. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
How's everybody this evening?
Good. Good.
Um, I'll go quick, uh, because I actually over at friend's house in northern Iowa, kind of a work trip. But yeah, a few concerns were brought to my attention and granted, I'm a bit of a nobody. But I figured it was best to kind of voice my thoughts on it. I'll start off by saying Stewart is a great town. I absolutely love it. Our downtown is thriving, it's vibrant, things are happening. And when I first moved here, uh, it wasn't like that at all, so we have truly came a long way. Complex, it's definitely embarrassing and to be honest, I'm not trying to be ugly. But we do look like a bunch of country bumpkins when we have soccer games and such out there. I just want to be honest and I, like I said, I don't want to be ugly. The funds for the sports complex are imperative to be used solely for the sports complex. And my two points are, uh, one, I believe, and I don't want to add an extra layer of frustration or retake anybody, but I believe any final decisions. Should include those who are utilizing the sports complex regularly, especially the soccer board. I, like I said, I apologize if this adds another layer. But those people who are consistently out there coaching kids day in, day. Day out, they should have direct involvement. I know I was part of the committee that was originally formed and I have heard nothing since that committee had been formed. And then additionally, my second point, uh, no money from the hundred and fifty thousand, I truly believe should not be used on other products. You know, a thousand dollars here can turn into ten thousand dollars there. And all those funds need to be utilized for the sports complex. After the project's complete, sure, I mean, we can look at that. But I personally, I started the Stewart Soccer League and I've always said that youth sports are of the utmost importance. The Stewart Soccer League has made two donations thus far to a couple of local youth sports groups with just additional funds that we had raised. And I believe that the project is imperative for fostering a better environment for local youth sports. And sometimes that one hour that a kid gets away from home just practicing soccer is as safe as they'll feel all week. And I believe we need a better environment for them overall. So thank you for hearing me out and if you guys don't have anything else, I'll sign off.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Just a second.
Y'all have a good evening.
You got something?
Yeah.
For him? Just a second, Tim.
Uh, I just, I wanted to make sure that people are aware. When we were presented with this hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. The city council, at the very top, if you look, it says, City of Stewart, Iowa, propose sports complex slash park improvements for city council review. So I would think that next time if somebody is saying we need funds to go to one certain project, that we're very careful with what words are being used on budgets. And I'm not saying we need to use the money for anything else. I'm just saying, you know, that thousand dollars for stumps, it was for a park improvement. And this budget does say sports complex, park improvements. And so when I voted for this, that's what I think. So that's just my two cents.
No, and that and that totally is fair. Um, I I didn't see the exact pattern, so I mean, I don't have it in my hand. I just have a cell phone. I'm staring at a wall, as you see. But at the end of the day, um, the hardest point I'm going to drive home is youth sports are crucial. And we need a better environment for not only the kids, but also, you know, for parents and grandparents and all these people that come from all over the town. Uh, I believe, you know, when Adele or Van Meter, whomever comes out and visits us, it's it's a pretty tough lot.
I would also ask, we have a Parks and Rec coordinator and I don't think she's been included in these meetings with the original committee, so. She runs a T-ball program out there. It'd be nice to have her included in whatever discussions you're having.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Before we move on, Matt or Laura, do you have anything to comment since you're on the board? Can you come up to microphone?
Sure. Um, I guess I echo a lot of what Tim said. I've obviously been on the soccer board for. Well, Owen is seventeen and he started me with sport, so for thirteen years I have been involved with the soccer board. My husband and I, along with a lot of community members, have put our own money into that complex. When I ran the baseball program, we did as well. We picked weeds. We drug the fields. We did that on our own time. But I do echo what Tim said. I mean, our soccer program brings in over a six-week period games every weekend. We bring in people from communities all across, like up to two hours away from Stewart that come to Stewart. So we want to make them proud, you know, when they're coming into our town and they're coming into our sports complex. We want to have nice roads, obviously. It is a disaster, I will say, on Saturday mornings from ten to one. Having U six and U eight games, it's a nightmare. I mean, I know a lot of you have been out there. It is, it is a mess, so obviously additional parking would be ideal. And it's important to have. Do we need that much parking? Probably not that much parking. But we would like to be a part of those discussions because we do utilize the fields. We are out there all the time, day and night, fall and spring. So to be a part of those discussions and then just to work out the logistics of it. I mean, we know where the fields go. We know how the track flow of traffic comes in and out. Also due to parking, we've had to have our high school games out of the high school complex because we don't have lights. So when we have five o'clock games, because we have youth football, we have to hold them out there. We don't have a choice because we don't have lights. We would like to hold them out there, but we just can't. So we have to work with the school in organizing that with youth football. So it's a bit of a juggle, but we make it work. We do appreciate, obviously, seed helps us out a lot, but we do have monthly quarterly board meetings that we have, so. I mean, involve us. We have a whole board of people that would love to give input and help to make that complex better for our youth. Because truly, we hold, we have. Two hundred and twenty kids signed up almost every season. So that's the biggest programs we have in the Westland Valley District, so and all four towns come here. So let's make it work for those kids.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, you got anything?
The one I have to throw into that is when we had the initial meeting, I don't believe that that was established as a meeting. I just believe that was a group of interested individuals, but it was not formed as a committee.
Yes, I was gonna add to that too, because I'm confused on. People involvement and committees and everything else, so.
I didn't know that we could have committees without direction.
Correct.
Right?
So that's where I was kind of confused. It's it's great. I don't have a problem with it. I think it's great. This is what we need. But it just sounds like there's people asking to be. Involved and they're not being involved, so I guess I'm sitting up here like, what do we need to do?
So I think the purpose of like this little presentation was just to get a timeline. Because every meeting, we're sitting up here, we're asking questions, every joint meeting, Dick's asking questions to the utility board, you know, what's the status of this? What's the status of this? So this was just to get Jim to be able to present to us his side of things and what. His, you know, what he has or is going to do. I don't think there was like huge decisions being made and James was right there. It was just a. Have a framework so we don't have to have every meeting set up here, talk about the same thing over and over and over again. And then everybody just kind of has a general idea of what the timeline looks like for these line items that I don't even know where that came from. That I think that was something from. Chip, maybe? Is that where that budget came from when we were initially talking? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we had discussed several options on what it was going to be used for. You know, initially, you know, when it was the purchase of my end and that just kind of got thrown in there for placeholder.
And I think we accomplished a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, there's extra money there and so if you get the important things done, it's like if you get the infrastructure done. You have that extra money and people can then make decisions on what you're doing with the extra money at that time. But you have to get that core thing done, the parking lots, the lights, before you can make things look pretty.
Have I done? I don't already have a motion, but do we feel like we gave Jim clear direction on that before at least?
No.
Yeah. That's what I guess I got to ask them too.
We approved what we, what you presented to us, unless you want to add to it something.
So the parking lot, I mean, I can go through, but I thought my vote was the parking lot, the grading, the drain work. Great, Jim? On the main parking.
You highlighted the whole.
The lights. The T-ball parking and then.
The bathroom.
The bathrooms.
Yeah, we approved that, Jim, and the finance of it will watch with. It can go up, down, we can work on that together. So you're good with that?
That's fine.
Yes. I think it's good direction and I like what I, what's here, you know, kind of. They giving you exactly what you presented to move on with that. Money can go up and down, work on that together. If we need to discuss the finance after that, we'll come back to.
But then you at least have something done and then you know how much you have left over to make things look pretty and.
Do you want to add something else? It looks like you have something else to say.
Well, I think it's a good background.
Are we going to make that parking lot that size? Are we going to downsize it?
Well, this was, this is what Randy proposed later.
I talked to Randy today about it and she seemed fine.
So I guess we're good. Discuss if you need it.
I was gonna say, sorry, Jim, if you already had like measurements and everything.
We do. We got measurements and everything. That's where the figures came from.
Okay.
From the rock. That's where.
And I guess I'm fine with that, as many others was too, for what you already had.
Okay.
But adjusted the utilities that could sweeps in the electrical wire.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, and Dustin and.
I vote soon.
Because I want to pour concrete by Friday. Right, right, okay.
Perfect. We want you to pour concrete. Yeah, no kidding.
Okay, bye. Next, it come up financing.
That's such a good certificate. Chip is still on.
Uh, I am here to bet. I'm not here until six forty five. I would just mention on that certificate. And the evaluation detail that's at your seats tonight and that email to Ash and Sarah earlier today. Reflects the housing valuation as of January one, twenty twenty three for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five is over twenty million seven hundred thousand from the first three cases alone. That information that's in at your places, it was in your packets and then it's finalized with the tip like L I set aside amount. That's just over a hundred thousand based on the valuation for FY twenty four, twenty five. And then the debt issues are included as well as the development agreements and would simply recommend approval and have any answer any questions?
And this is a.
We're looking at this one, correct?
Yeah, this is. That's really what Chip is leading us to. That certificate we filed was a two county.
Chip, we're not certifying Casey's this year again, correct?
It is not certified. It's intentionally left. It's at zero and the certificate is listed there just to be very clear that it's zero.
Okay.
So if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer it. Chip or myself. If not, we'd like a motion and I do file this. Go ahead. Move on.
Second. Calvall, second. Renslow, how do you go?
Patrick.
Doley.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calvall.
Yes.
Renslow.
Yes.
Okay, six track. You can vote the cameras agreement.
Six eight, agreement. You being given all this information, uh, you got. I hope we got a chance to look at it.
Kind of, we do what we discussed this afternoon.
Yeah, and that's what we give you as soon as we get it, we pass it on to you.
It was in the council packets as well.
Yep.
Yes.
Chip, did you want to go over, uh, I know there was a lot of concern with if the legislation changes, whether the city would incur fees?
It's that you're you're correct. So the agreement, which which has been thoroughly reviewed by Steve Brick, he has a, he has done a. Has provided a summary letter that's at, I think was emailed perhaps to the council and is at your council packets tonight. We just received that this morning. The the agreement allows for cancellation of the. The language allows for cancellation of the agreement with Genoptik. It also allows for, in the unlikely event that the DOT does not allow installation of the cameras, and that's not expected, but Steve had a good point. And there's language added to that effect, that if the DOT does not agree to it or allow it, that the agreement is terminated as well. And Ash and Sarah have an email from Genoptik indicating that they're agreeing with that language. So the cities, it provides more protection for the city from that standpoint. The other items that are updates, I know the council's talked about this a number of times, most recently the October twenty sixth, uh, special council meeting. The benefit that's outlined in this agreement is that the initial term is shortened from five years to four years. The fee for the initial term is lowered from forty percent than you had before, is now lowered down to thirty five percent. The renewal year fee is lowered further to thirty three percent. It's got the updates from Steve again based on the termination in the event the DOT does not allow installation. So with that, happy to answer questions. It really would have been a lot of work that Steve Bricks done on this.
Thank you too, Chip.
Thank you too, Chip, for facilitating this.
Thank you.
So one thing, I'm guessing the DOT will not allow speed cameras attached to underneath the bridge. I'm guessing that if speed cameras are put up, they will have to go on their own pole, which I did read that they could do that. And I'm also further guessing that if you stick a pole out there in the right of way, it needs to be protected with a guardrail system. And I'm also guessing that would probably cost the city of Stewart for a guardrail system. You're looking to have a contractor do that for ten thousand or so. So keep that in mind as well. Now, I'm not here to speak on behalf of the DOT. I want to make that clear. Not speaking on their behalf.
Is it correct? Am I wrong? And Chip maybe knows. But the agreement here is to put it actually on the bridge.
Right.
Correct?
But if they can't go on the bridge, they can affix them on the side, if that's what the DOT requests.
Which that's what they said in their one contract, that they do have poles to mountain. And they did say in their agreement that if something happens, we're, we terminate or whoever terminates, that they will take the cameras down the poles. They will leave the concrete bases or whatever in that. Again, I'm guessing that DOT will not allow that. Somebody is going to rip up the bases and remove everything out of the right of way. Whether the city does that or somebody else does that.
I'm sure you would have checked all these other towns that have them already to see where they're placed.
I'll, I can offer input on that. So the, the cameras that Leclair, again, on Interstate eighty, similar to Stewart, they are on poles. So I'll just offer that input for folks to consider.
Do they have guardrails around them like Corey's talking?
Yeah, that specific point, I am not aware of how that's going to live. I do not know.
Okay.
So did we even move forward with this and say we want to put them on the, start with the initial bridge project? And they say, no, we can back out of it without any costs to us. Because, um, from what I'm hearing, you're just kind of guessing at this. I mean, I, I know you're making educated guesses. Don't get me wrong.
Right.
But we don't know for sure, you know? Um, at least I don't know a hundred percent.
Right.
Uh, on that, or if it, you know, if it meets the guardrail thing, I don't know a hundred percent for sure.
So. Go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, we're kind of that, it could happen, might not happen. We don't know. And I, but I, I, I respect, you know, you knowing more than me, but, uh.
Um, another, another thing we'll have to keep in consideration too. Um, and this happens a lot. So if the DOT does come out and say you will protect that with a guardrail or whatever, we have hit and runs on that guardrail. The DOT is not going to repair that. We're not going to absorb the cost on that. So that will also have to, excuse me. I'm guessing it will come back to the city of Stewart to absorb that cost. Most of the time, if somebody hits something like that, their vehicle is disabled, insurance will pay for that. But if there is a hit and run and that needs to be repaired, who's going to absorb that cost? Guessing it's going to have to be the city of Stewart.
Chip, Chip, if I, if I remember right, didn't they say that if something happens to the pole or the camera, they are, they will replace it? They replace their pole, I mean, not the guardrail, the pole and their equipment. They will replace it.
That, that specific point on the pole and including the camera, and I'm, I'm fully assuming and Genoptik has told me they are prepared to install this on a pole with them, Genoptik providing the pole. I, I believe that they would be prepared to repair it, replace the camera and the pole. I don't have feedback on the guardrail aspect at all, so I, that's all I can say at this point.
And I just, I can't say this enough. I'm not representing the DOT here tonight. So it's just, I'm, I'm assuming. So it's just my opinion. Um, so I don't want anybody to hold me liable for anything.
No.
It's just, I'm guessing.
Is there any questions or I'm gonna go ahead with the motion?
Should we, should we say anything which about the guardrail?
Uh, Warren?
Sitting here reading the agreement and maybe it's, uh, if anything, it's been timed out from, from what Chip just said. But both Chip's summary letter and the agreement itself says that the company, TPXUS, is responsible for putting everything in. Paragraph three point nine says that they will obtain and install everything to comply with all federal, state and N L E T S requirements, which I, I would read that as saying if DOT says there has to be a guardrail, then TPXUS puts in the guardrail.
But who's going to maintain it after that though?
But I think it says in their agreement that they maintain it. Just like everything else, their pole, their stuff, they maintain.
Guardrail and everything.
Says they're doing it on behalf of the customer, which is us. And they got to get insurance, which I assume includes their property insurance.
I'd like to, um, make a motion that we table this until after the first of the year, so we have time to go over things. We need to look at it again. Uh, with the holidays coming up, we just don't have a whole lot of time here. So that's my motion.
Second. Motion done.
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve the contract as Chip presented.
Oh, does it?
I made a motion.
Yeah, just like does it?
I just have a quick question. It, um, I just want to confirm that everyone on the council has in fact read through the entire agreement?
No, I have not.
But
Has everybody else read?
The agreement was given to us on Friday.
I'm just asking.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, we've had time to read it.
I have, I have read it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I made a motion.
Well, let's see, we have a second on Christian. Yes. Second, my call off. Okay. How do you vote? Patrick?
Nope.
Dolly?
Do we have any word? Are we going to put anything in here as far as checking on and making sure that we are covered by guardrail?
Yeah.
Yeah, he just said it was in the section three point.
But I just want to make sure we're bringing our basis on that.
That was an extra motion.
Be sure, I, I don't want to enter into an agreement where all of a sudden it does come back. So I just want to like, if we
So we don't, we don't even know if there'll be a guardrail provision.
We don't, we don't know.
We don't know.
Nothing.
I know.
So if, I think if the DOT then comes back and says you need then that's something you can discuss then. But in the contract, it says that they're responsible for installation and all of that and taking care of all the DOT stuff. It's right there in the agreement.
It's still a huge gray area. Have anything in black and redies on what the DOT is going to say or do.
Well, it's all subject to the DOT.
That's, that's huge. That's huge on a decision.
And they, when they're, when they presented their thing, they said they work with the DOT.
Uh huh.
They, they personally work on that. On that. So it's, I mean, we, it's been months trying to get a, you know. We had a DOT person in here the last time and they didn't mention anything about a guardrail. I think that would have been a prime opportunity for them to bring that type of information to, to the council. Uh, and, and make us aware of that. They should have made us aware of all that.
A guardrail on, based on a decision like this, that is irrelevant. I mean, if the legislators come back out next year and say you're taking it down, we're stuck with a heck of a bill. Heck of a bill.
Don't think that they will do it.
Cause it's in the thing that if the legislator, um, it's in termination for cause one point three. Uh, either party may terminate the agreement or any service agreement as applicable for cause if applicable state laws amended or state agency adopts a rule that would be part of to prohibit or substantially restrict the operation of automatic, automated traffic law or code enforcement system described in the
I, I guess I'm more like, like on this motion, we're saying that this is the motion to put it on the bridge.
As they presented it. And then I suppose that if the DOT comes back and says, Chip, if the DOT comes back and says we can't put it on the bridge, we can put it, you have to put a pole. Is that something you would have to come back to council and revisit?
If, no, it shouldn't be because Genoptik has indicated that they are responsible for installing the camera on the pole in the event that the DOT does not allow it on the bridge. I, I'm of the assumption at this point, frankly, that it won't put a bridge. So Genoptik is wide-eyed, clearly indicated that they will install a pole within, not the other bridge. So I, I don't think that needs to be a sticking point on that, on the question.
Okay, but if there's associated with the pole such as a guardrail and the maintenance of, are we sure that the company is going to take on that expense?
And I think.
They are responsible for the pole. This is a new question on tonight on the guardrail.
Chip, I think Warren just pointed it out in the contract. What section was that, Warren?
Three point nine. And at, at some point, you've got to trust your legal counsel. I mean, I assume he's, hey, Steve Brick, not, not me, and according to Chip, he did a lot of hard work on this, so. I would seeing he has a lawyer, I would trust your lawyer.
But he and our lawyer also said, um, be very careful what we're doing here. Okay, sit still on me.
Still on you, Dave, on your shoulders.
We can't amend that at all to just say, we're just going to trust them and say that we're not going to have any fees, costs associated. Otherwise, we need to revisit it. I just, I just.
That's what Steve Brick has prepared here. He's outlined everything.
If you're, if you're on the line, um, on the guardrail, that's a sticking point. I think Genoptik should be responsible for that. Am I definitively clear on that point? No, but I, it seems to me that given that they're responsible for the maintenance, they should be. If you wish to, you could make your motion such that the agreement is approved subject to Genoptik being responsible for the installation of the guardrail and simply having
That's what I
Is that what you're looking for?
So, Ash, can I reword my motion? To approve the agreement.
Well, then we have to.
Subject to Genoptik, taking responsibility in writing to make it clear that if there's a guardrail, which they've already put in there, that they're responsible, just clear that up.
Okay. That, that motion we haven't brought it on. So the motion is to approve that agreement with the stipulation that Genoptik will be responsible for the
Guardrail.
Guardrail.
If we should need one.
If we should need it.
Okay, so Renslow made the motion. Do we have a second?
Who's Cabal?
She, I think she just amended it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so how do you vote now then? Patrick?
Still a no.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
And now we go to B, considers ordinance for automatic traffic enforcement. First reading, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Renslow?
Second.
And with Cabal, how do you vote? Patrick?
No.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Do you motion for the second reading?
Moved.
Moved by Cabal?
Second.
Second. Renslow, how do you vote? Patrick?
No.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Do you motion to wait for third final?
So moved.
By Renslow?
Second.
By Cabal, how do you vote? Patrick?
No.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Your motion. Ordinance, you know, that
Thank you, Chip.
Thanks, Chip. Thank you, folks.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Chip.
Three oh six C. Here I talk about that, right? That ordinance is very simple. We have an offset program to change the name to, we set off from kind of something, but that's essentially what the whole idea is. And we just like to have the council device and ordinance to establish that you setting this up, so. That's the whole about it. We've been using that for almost so it's okay with the council, we do the motion.
What was it for again? Say that one more time.
We have an offset program. People participate in between, they change the name from offset to set off.
Oh, income offset.
You're kidding me.
Okay. Yeah, oh, if that's
Okay, move by Cabal.
You always done this?
Yeah.
Second, second by Morgan. How do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Second reading, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Renslow?
Second.
By Morgan, how do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have a motion? Wait, third final?
So moved.
Moved by Renslow?
Second.
Second by Dolly, how do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Okay. Griffin County EMS, we have somebody speaking here?
Is he here?
Drop him, said he was going to be here, but.
Can I ask a question? And I really, it's, it's just a simple question. We don't want it to be parked at. If we discussed this at our last special council meeting and the four of us that were here made a decision, why is it on the agenda again?
Cause they asked it to be on the agenda. Which anybody can be.
I, that's like I said, I don't want to be parked at. I'm just asking.
Okay, Sean.
I mean, I guess we, I think it was asked to be on the agenda just to reconsider it, kind of like an olive branch to say, hey, I think, uh, there was some information maybe that went awry there and so just to kind of put it back in front of you and say what was the decision there, you know, if there are any more questions. That was kind of the point of the presentation was to bring questions and concerns and that kind of stuff. So that's what he wanted to do was just kind of revisit that.
Sean, I watched a KCCI news video of Panora and they, the meeting we had didn't have the taxation now. Is it seventy-five cents per thousand is what they come up with?
That is the maximum per state, yeah. The, so it could be any, it kind of depends on what's the plan would turn out to be, you know what I mean? If you don't need to tax for that, obviously the taxpayers would rather pay a lower tax, um, and that would obviously be easier to send to them, you know, and it can get approved. But, um, you know, depending on what the the agreement or plan would end up being would kind of guide what that tax might look like. So they would be one in the, so they vote on the tax in specific and then the plan kind of supplements that.
Can you tell me what counties already just passed this last Tuesday?
Correct, four counties did. Let's see. Cedar, Hamilton, Ida and Shelby.
Okay, I have a quick question. When you say passed this, is this the essential service tax? Or this as in a countywide service?
All four of those counties only have one service in their county. So essentially they're passing, but but it is just for the tax. They all approved a seventy-five cent per thousand tax. Um, at least seventy, if not into eighty percent of voters to supplement the EMS that is in the county, which for those four counties is one service. I, I believe, don't quote me on that. I know I
The essential service tax that they're running on.
Yes. And that's what, so if the tax does not get approved, then the supervisors had, had declared it essential. If it, if the tax isn't approved, then that essentially ceases to exist and it's not essential anymore. And it just operates the same as it had before.
But they didn't vote on a countywide strictly the tax?
Right, that's
I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear.
I'm not familiar with what, there, there would obviously be some associated plan, right? Because then they have to develop a board and oversee where the money goes. But I'm not very familiar with what went along with that proposal. That's correct. All of them would have individual All of them would have individual county-wide plans.
What would be the difference between an essential tax and the millage tax that you're getting now?
Is that it would all be funnelled through a central location. So then to otherwise supplement, and it's also, I don't, am not, all the townships kind of do something.
Are you tracking what I'm saying? Because currently, townships, and I don't know if Stewart in town pays a millage fee or if that's just a township thing. But townships themselves pay what they call a millage fee. Correct me if I'm wrong here, because I'm just learning about this. And so like Harrison Township, Penn Township, whoever, they pay these fees. And they get split half county or half fire, half ambulance. Right?
No.
It, it, sorry, there's a percentage difference between, there's, because when I looked up the millage fees, because it's public record within the auditors, Stewart covers here. Every one of them pays a millage fee for ambulance except for one. Now, the rates are different.
Correct, each township sets the percentage.
Yeah, they set the percentage, but, and one of them does not pay an ambulance fee. So if an essential service was implemented, if that taxed, wouldn't it just adjust that millage so that they're paying the same straight?
Dustin, can you answer that?
So I, I'm not an expert on it. I have read through the legislation and essentially, all of.
Dustin, can you come up my probably?
Sure.
Don't be shy.
I don't know how many of you have had opportunity to read the legislation or taken the time to, but I believe what you're describing is like, the millage fee is the township all pays it and then they get to decide who provides their services, right? Right? They can decide. So what this legislation does is it gives the county the authority to tax. So it taxes everybody that lives in the county, whether it's rural or city or whatever. And all of those funds that are raised goes to a board appointed by that county, the EMS board. And I believe commonly that board reports to the board of supervisors. That's the chain of command. But that board divides those funds however they decide to do it. So if Stewart decides, we don't even want to be at the table when all this is planned out, what could very possibly end up happening is they make it together and decide, you know what? We're going to do, we're going to have a county-wide ambulance service. We're going to continue, but we're going to tax everyone in the county, which includes the folks that live in the city of Stewart. And we're going to use this tax to pay for it.
But it would only be Guthrie County.
It, correct. Now, there have been, like Sean mentioned earlier, there's other situations where multiple counties have got together. I would hope that's being considered in this case. The one thing that I think is really getting lost in all of this, and I, I struggle with where it's coming from, but not a single person, Jotham, Sean, nobody has said, God, we want you guys to agree to this county-wide ambulance. We think it's going to be great. Decided as a county and as voters that EMS is an essential service yet. So right now, we're.
That is not what we were told at the last meeting.
No, it is what you were told.
No, it is not. He stood up here and he said it was an essential service. Straight from his mouth.
It will be on the ballot.
No, he said it wasn't.
So maybe that's, maybe that's where the difference is. And maybe we can move forward from the point now, knowing that in Guthrie County EMS is not an essential service. What Jotham and what the, that group of is trying to do is sit down and say, okay, we think it needs to be an essential service. We think EMS is that important, especially to rely on. Let's sit down with all the stakeholders, the hospitals, the EMS agencies, the towns, anybody who's interested. And let's figure out how to make that work for us. Is it a county-wide service? Maybe. Is it, we don't do a county-wide service, we just expand the transporting services we have. So maybe an org gets a little bigger, Stewart gets a little bigger, whoever. But the whole point is at this point, nobody knows what the best option is. And if the, the vote that you guys made at the special meeting basically said, not only do we not know what's going to happen, we don't care and don't even include us in your plans. And I think that is a really, really huge mistake. Because whether the city council or whether the city of Stewart is involved in the planning or not, it's moving forward. And something will happen, something will be voted on, there will be, if it passes, there will be a board that handles all of these decisions that affect the entire county. And we won't be included because we chose not to be. So I think we need to reevaluate as a council and as a city, why are we not going in the opposite direction? I know, talking to Angie, one of the things that frustrated her the most was, Mr. Calva, your comments about, I don't think Kenny would want this or Kenny would want this. And Angie and Kenny were very close. They rode back and forth to work together for months, like 18 months, I think. And one of the things that she feels incredibly strongly about is Kenny would be the one at the table saying EMS is essential, let's do this, let's make this happen. And let's figure out why we're not putting Stewart first. How do we get involved in these meetings and make Stewart the star of the whole program instead of saying, no, we don't want to talk about it?
So these other counties that she said passed this, right, they, as far as you know, just one service, right?
That's not most of the counties, but.
They didn't have to go to town and say, hey, we potentially want you to give up your service to be run by a board that, we don't know who's going to be on it.
Okay, but that's instantly, there's nobody's asking you to give up your service.
Well, this proposal, I'm just going by the proposal, you know, it's going to have a board develop and define an ongoing EMS board to oversee the EMS service. That doesn't say that Stewart will be in control of the decisions of their EMS ring. So at some point, I'm not saying this is going to happen, at some point, you could get a board of supervisors and say, you know what, we don't want that service in Stewart. And that's why I said, I don't know if Kenny would want us to relinquish our control over our EMS that provides service to our, to our citizens.
And that's where the biggest disconnect is because, and maybe I've heard it with different ears than you did. But not a single person has said, hey, we have this great idea for a new service. And you're going to have no control over it, you're going to have no input, and it's going to be run by the county. If the county, if the voters in Guthrie County decide that EMS is an essential service, we're going to tax for it. And that vote passes next year. We will be taxed for it. And the legislation requires that we set up a board to manage all of those funds. And the legislation gives the power to that board to say, spend them however you want. So if the board decides, you know what, Stewart doesn't want to be involved, they get none of this tax. By law, they are 1,000% within their rights to do that. So they may say, you know what, you guys do your own thing. We're going to do what we want.
Kind of like, I'm going to do it.
And I think what, I think what, one of the things that you lose in that, and if, if you read through it, there are so many advantages to having EMS as an essential service. There are so many benefits that Stewart can get, even if that benefit isn't a county-wide EMS. Even if that benefit, or even if we decide as a county or as a group or whatever, we'll keep services or three or however many we want. One of the things spelled out in the legislation is that services can become training centers. How much money do we spend a year sending people to training or trying to pay it? But I mean.
We should be, and that's why we have some of the problems that we have.
But having the ability to be a training center, we can start hosting trainings and classes and certifications instead of having to send people out to do that. One of the things that happens a lot is like, well, buying, you know, they can get together and say, well, instead of, you know, Stewart buying these EMS supplies, we're now buying them as a bigger group. So you're going to get, there's a potential for bigger discounts. I mean, there's, there's so many things that you guys have said you don't even want to talk about. And if the hangup is that there's a fear that they're going to rip the ambulance out of Stewart and, and it's going to be run by a foreign group someday, what I would say to you is, be part of the conversation. Because at this point, ideas are still being formed, options are still there, opportunity is still there. So be part of the conversation. And then guess what? If they voted in and they say, yep, it's an essential service, we're all getting taxed anyway. And then if the board gets together and says, yep, it's an essential service, and here's our plan, we're doing a county-wide ambulance, and here's how we're going to split it up. Then you guys have the opportunity to say, you know what, we've looked at your plan, we've tried to give our input, not what we're interested in, and don't be a part of it. But don't shut yourselves and everyone in county out of being part of that conversation.
And I think to your point, Mike, you know, you're worried that if the county were to take over, right? And we don't have, you know, Stewart doesn't have any say and they want to pull the thing. Well, what happens in five years when the ambulance has lost a million dollars? And the city council goes, well, we don't have any money left to give you. So now, you close your doors because you can't even provide that service. And then the county comes in anyways. And then you didn't get a say when you had a chance. You say, well, we can't do this, so somebody else is going to have to. You know, and when it's essential, they will, you will have to. You know, you either have your own service, like the police, you either have your own service or you pay the county to come in and do it. And so.
Or you have your own service and you pay the county, or so, like we're doing right now.
Right, and, and so I mean, there's other options, but you know, I, I think that there's, there's concern on both sides from my standpoint. You know, that, that at some point, a different council could make a decision that says, hey, we don't want this here at all. You know what I mean? And, and they could do that. And, and so that's just much of a concern. And so, you know, there are a lot of benefits and, and, you know, if we don't pass a vote, then it is not essential and they could close the ambulance down and then nobody has to come in. And then, you know, do you wait for Dallas County to come in or their county or Madison County or, you know, you're still waiting maybe from Panora or whatever. And so, you know, and there's, there are a lot of benefits, there's a lot of reason that the committee came to the council was to say, give us your input, what, what kind of things, you know, would you be willing to look at or not look at in this case, right? And then we'll try and draw them up and consider them in, in the proposals to move forward. You know, because there are multiple ways, you know, I think, I think the most sure way is to have a county-wide service because, for example, Cass County, they contract Midwest to provide their ambulance service, right? It's Atlantic, the hospital, and the county all chip in like 70 or a hundred thousand dollars, something like that. And then Midwest provides their hospital transports and all the 911 for the city, right? At any point in time, they can decide whoever the lowest. And so those people can change all the time. People come, you know, Midwest, they, that's why, gosh, who was it before? Just, they just redid the contract two or three years ago and it was a whole new service. You know, so if you, if you give all this money to the county and say, well, the board just gets to decide who. So let's say they were to design a thing where they contract us to provide an extra ambulance to the west side of the county. They say, we're going to give you $125,000 a year, you have a second ambulance staffed all the time. That's great for Stewart. We have a second ambulance always staffed, you know, the people around here get that, but we have to provide a service to the county per contract, right? They could just, one year decide, well, that's too expensive, so we're going to have somebody else do it. So, but if you have the county overseeing its own ambulance, you don't have that. You know what I mean? It's not just the lower bidder. It's, you know, and, and logistically speaking, it makes no sense to take an ambulance out of Stewart. Like, you, you would never be able to pass that by anybody that knows anything. Because this is where the calls are. Panora is where the calls are. Guthrie Center is where the calls are. And so, you know, there's a lot of calls in the rural areas, if you will, I mean, rural, but like, you know, more rural areas. But like, it, it wouldn't make any sense. You know, we run 600 calls a year just in this area. You know what I mean? Panora runs, you know, closer to 900 calls a year. And they do cover, you know, twice, two and a half times more area than we do. You know, but that's only 50% more calls. And that doesn't even include like the lower 20% that it air covers as well. And so, you know what I mean, so why, why would you take an ambulance out of here? You know what I mean? Then, then the board isn't doing that. You know, somebody comes back to them like the board supervisors and says, that doesn't make any sense. Like, we need new people on this board because we need to reevaluate.
You know, just, so.
And that's just one way to do it.
Thanks. Just to, just to wrap it all up real quick, Mr., if you don't mind, just to wrap it all up, I mean, those are all excellent points. And I think what we need, if we wanted to drill down tonight and focus on one thing that we're going to discuss tonight, I think, and I don't, we haven't talked about this at all.
No.
So disagree, speak up, but I think that one thing would be, at this point, the only decision that needs to be made is, are we going to continue? And I think Sean has done a tremendous job of this, of being involved and being part of the conversations and trying to shape the direction. Are we going to be part of the conversation and try to have some input into making whatever this essential service is the best it can be for Stewart? Knowing full well that if we don't like it, we can back out. Or are we going to stick our head in the sand and just pretend it's not happening? And let other people who may or may not care about what happened in Stewart, come up with all the ideas? It doesn't make sense.
So last, last week, to piggyback off of this, last week they had a meeting up in Guthrie. I was invited to that meeting. So last month when we had this meeting, Jotham came down and spoke to us. I was the only no on that. Everybody else wanted to vote. You guys all voted yes to get a proposal. A special meeting. You, you guys just threw it out the door. And I didn't understand that, but, so I was invited up there because I was the only no and they wanted to know why. I totally wanted to throw it out the door the first time. And my response was, why do we need to come to the table? Why do we need to do that when the ambulance is sitting in our backyard? What, why? That night, I got very, very educated. So I could be wrong by saying this, but this Stewart rescue is, we're losing money. Every day, we're losing money with it. Essentially, if we go county-wide, handful of years down the road, they're going to be purchasing ambulances for us where we don't have that cost. They're going to be hiring people, employees, everything else. So like I said, I got very educated that night and it really woke me up because I, I was quick to vote no, not to even listen. But after I walked out of that meeting the other night, I think it'd be in our best interest to leave. Mr.. Cap said, we, as city of Stewart and Panora, are the biggest drivers on this. There was a council member from Panora that was there and I looked over at him, I said, why are you guys driving here for? And he looked at me, he says, we're kind of waiting on you guys. So Stewart is because we are growing, we are getting bigger, the whole county's looking at us. And like Sean and Dustin was saying, if we go to the table now, we can drive this ship. We can get our input in there because it's going to happen. More likely, it's going to happen, and like they said, they're going to tax us anyway. So if they're going to tax us anyway, we might as well have a huge say in it.
And I think all that, I, I think we're on the same page on this. Yeah, all that we're saying is, give Sean a chance to go up or give other, you know, Councilmember Chris Capatrick and whoever else wants to be involved, give them a chance to go up there and fight for Stewart and be the driver in this instead of waiting to see what they decide and then deciding if you like it or not.
And, and you know, to, because, because I feel the same way, Mike, as you did, because, you know, this is our hometown. We have a good service here. We have good employees, we have a good ambulance service. If I call them, they're going to be at my house within minutes. And that's one thing that I said up there the other night was, you know, I, I don't want to lose that. And all of them up there, there was a room of 15 or so, they're all like, why would you lose that? The ambulance, why would we take that ambulance off the interstate system, for one thing? Why would we relocate that? And I'm like, I don't know. That's just my, that's my fear.
And they're like, absolutely not, Stewart is growing, you guys are growing. If anything, we might probably add some more units and personnel down there to help. Well, that really sparked my interest because that'd be great if we could add more personnel, more help. Um, so it, it's worth, it's worth a conversation. And we don't have to vote on yes or no tonight. But it's worth going to the table and having discussions with them. That's all this proposal is pretty much it.
And I had our financials last week, month. And I think the most we took out general fund was a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Average is a hundred and eighteen, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the general fund. Cover, which is fine, we gotta have ambulance, but what was the price? Possibly eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars with this new taxation?
Could be, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's a lot of testing.
No tax. But some of that money could come this, this way as well. A, a lot of it. Um, so.
And, and the other part of that is, is you have the, so you pass the tax and you get a tax. Well, if, if it were a countywide service, then, then the county's responsible for that. So if that eight hundred thousand dollars, let's just make a number, is not sufficient, if it's a million dollars to provide that service, well, then the county's still responsible for that. And then they take up that rather than coming out of the coffers of, you know, the City of Stewart or whatever. And, and, you know, how that looks down the road, I don't know, I'm just saying that like, that's, that's what they wanna do is take that burden off of the backs of the cities, which, you know, can shut it down. They could say, you know, hey, we don't wanna do this anymore, it's too expensive. And, and, you know, we paid a hundred, you know, we're waiting for an ambulance that we paid a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for, right? If I went out and purchased that and, you know, we talked about type one or whatever, you're immediately, you know, twenty percent more. You know, so just, just in the two years, almost three years that wait for that, you're already looking at thirty thousand dollars just for an ambulance.
I'm glad you brought that up and I'm gonna get sidetracked on, on this for just a second. Where is our ambulance? It's been two, two years, right?
Right, so I've heard, so we have a chassis, it's down in Florida. Um, they're working on, I asked them for pictures last week, um, they, uh, until last week, they were telling me the end of this year and now they're saying February, so I don't know, we're, um. They were.
You're getting that through who? Who's that coming through?
Uh, Wield Coach, which is through Feld.
And I wanna keep, I wanna keep bringing it back to the point though. Even if we decide, then a countywide, if we have all the discussions, they say, yep, here's our plan. We're not asking you guys to decide right now, right? There, it's, you may get to that point to, you know what? We're, we're fine losing a hundred thousand dollars, like, we're, to keep, to have that certainty, we're fine with it. And you still have that ability. You're not giving away anything with this thing.
Sure. Can I, can I?
I just have one quick thing.
Okay, hurry up, I got, I got.
This may.
Okay, go ahead.
So, let's just say we have a county service. And because Panora has to cover Audubon County transports, Panora Unit One's gone in Audubon County and then they have to transfer to Omaha or wherever. Then Panora Unit Two gets called out and they're having a call and they're out of service because now they're covering that second call. And they get a third call up there at the jail or wherever, and they call us because we're closer. And our ambulance then scurries up to Panora because we're a countywide service and we're helping each other out. What happens when we have an ambulance here? We have an emergency here in Stewart and because Panora has all these extra duties and all these extra things that they're having to cover, now we're covering for them. And we have an emergency here and we have nobody.
So I think that, that is the perfect question to illustrate the point that I'm trying to drive home. Questions like that are exactly why we need to be part of the conversation.
Right, but it's happening now and we're.
It, it is happening now, absolutely. And we're not talking about it. So. So what if the agreement is, the, the. Why would a group of people that don't include Stewart say, we wanna put a second ambulance in Stewart so that if we have to go up to the jail from Stewart, there's still one in town? And say, well, we'll leave one in town all the time. Uh, but if we're not up there, I mean, why? They would have no reason to agree to that, you know what I mean? Why would they look out for that? Why would they be interested in that? I also think in that particular scenario, if Panora had agreed, I mean, this is way into the weeds. But if we're far enough that Panora has agreed they're gonna join this countywide service, then the board, I mean, the, whatever deal they have going on with Audubon or whoever it may be, is gone and that then falls in with the, the board appointed by their, within the county, the EMS board. But I will tell you that even if we're a standalone agency, when they, I've never asked, maybe you have, I don't know. Whenever I've been called to go to an adjoining jurisdiction on a rescue call, I don't ever call dispatch and say, wha- what exactly are they doing right now? Because if they're on a transport, I don't wanna go.
I'm just saying that those scenarios happen, we have a transport here, we have a transport here, now we have no ambulance, now we're being dragged up there and we have nobody to cover our own, I think you're just stretching things too thin.
But you can also, I mean, you know, to.
And it was just a scenario.
Yeah, absolutely. But what happens when we're, our ambulance is already out, right? So we have a call in Stewart, uh, somebody falls and breaks their leg and so we're transferring one, well, then who do you get called? If we don't have any help from anybody else, we're, we're calling them to come down and help us.
Right, and that's understandable.
And so, that's, that's kind of one, why we do that now. But two, something that they can address that they would not be interested in addressing because that's time and money that they won't have to spend or wouldn't have to spend because we're not a part of the station or we're not part of the deal. You know what I mean? And so, I.
And I think we'll still have to.
I think one scenario.
Sorry, Mike's been, I kinda cut my off.
Oh, that's all right, I just, um, and I know we could go through scenarios and stuff and I agree, you know, that would be better handled situations. My thing, when, when we had this vote and, and, and then we, we had the first vote, then we had the second one. And if you recall, if everybody here recalls, I was very hesitant on that vote. I didn't even think we needed to vote. Because if Guthrie County's gonna do a proposal, do a damn proposal, bring it to our table.
Correct.
When you bring something here that says you're gonna do a board, that's what I look at. You're gonna do board, that's taking control away from Stewart. I didn't wanna vote. Go, do your proposal, bring it back. How many meetings have you been to on this?
Uh, probably ten or twelve.
How many of you come up to the council and report it on?
Well, and see, that's, so I've had conversations with Ash and that's why we kinda waited until we had sort of a direction to go. Because if we came early on and just said, okay, we're thinking about doing this, well, you know, to quote or to, kinda like, say what somebody said tonight, you guys don't know what you don't know, right? And, and if we have absolutely nothing to hand you, because that's what they did in Panora in August, right? So they went to Panora in August and actually had a special, a specific meeting just to have a conversation like this. And, and I was like, well, we. We're hesitant because we don't know anything, because there's absolutely no information here. And so, we're not gonna agree, one, to absolutely no information. And two, you know what I mean, like, then whatever, whatever the worst possible scenario is in your head, it's right, because you have nothing to look up of and, and, and to.
I guess, just what I'm saying is, if somebody has a meeting, uh, and they're discussing something, I'd rather have somebody come up and say, hey, we're having a meeting. We don't have anything for you. You know, this is, we're meeting this, like, just something, we need something. But when you come up and say, hey, here's this proposal, we'd like to ha- have a vote on it. Because if you, if you're not for it, then we might as well not do it. I feel kinda pressured into having that vote. And I don't appreciate that.
But, but I had made it very clear before the meeting that, that this is, that that very first time we brought that to you guys, one, it was not the first time I brought it to Ash. And then two, that there was nothing you guys needed to do. It was simply to get your input, you know, however you wanted to do that, um, into what we were doing and how we would move forward with that. So you're right, I agree there, I mean, uh, I'm not the council, but there was no vote that was necessary because there was no, there was no, nothing to take action on. You know, that was just simply kind of look at, kind of like a lock proposal to say, here's some information, this is, this is kinda what we're looking at, but it depends on what you guys say about it.
Guthrie County doesn't need our permission to have meetings and put a proposal through.
Correct, yeah.
And personally, I felt, I, I felt trapped by that vote, so that's why I revoted to make sure that everybody knew that giving up our service will always be a no-go for me. Okay?
Isn't it also?
And if I just add to that real quick, that is a great position to take to the meetings and say, you know what? I wanna be part of this, I wanna be in these discussions. Here's my line in the sand. I'm not crossing it and let's find a solution based off of that.
But don't you think in your monthly reports, cuz this has been going on, I think I was told at least a year plus, that maybe in a monthly report that the department heads are supposed to be putting in our packet, like, if there's something going on, he could have, I mean, you could have said, hey, I'm part of this board. There's fifteen people, there's just a little update or hey, we met, nothing to come of it. I mean, Matt Funk gives us stuff on Toastmasters and all this stuff. We, it doesn't need to be brought up in a meeting, but you could have, you know, I just, I get what you're saying because it's been going on for so long and none of us knew about it. It was kind of, it caught us off guard.
Well, before we attack Sean.
I'm not, no, I'm not attacking him, I'm just saying, it maybe could have been put in the report.
He does, he has been going to the meetings, he has been coming back to the office. And he was advised, don't say anything quite yet until we get more information, which, fine. I can appreciate that, I get where, um, Cobal's coming from, but I'm fine with that too, because if you're gonna come here and say, hey, we're talking about this, I'd be like, okay, we're, we're just wasting time at the moment because you don't have enough information. So he was advised not to say anything, but he wanted to. So, that's why it's not on his report every month.
Jim.
Is there a representative from the community of Stewart other than Sean?
I just went last week and that was the first time.
No, and I was curious.
Yeah.
There isn't currently, I know there's a couple of people that have talked about it, so.
A couple other people have gone, I know, like Luke's been up there and stuff like that and.
I mean, like a citizen non EMS type.
Is there, there's a board, the way I understood it.
Exactly.
Uh, there is a board, so just to kinda clarify this, because I got a phone call from a supervisor that was very confused. This started with Sean and, and Panora getting together for this essential service, whatever. This was all brought to the supervisors, the supervisors had a vote on the essential service and they're mandated to come up with this board. And this board is fifteen people. Correct?
Yeah.
And the, the supervisors pick that committee. And it's, there's some people from some townships maybe, Stacy Richter I think is one of them. Um, is there another one?
There's two, um, county supervisors on the board, um, Jotham is there, there's a couple, uh, yeah, people from townships being there, so.
Yeah, some townships. And so that's, that's, so it kinda provides you a structure of how this came to. And so, once the supervisors voted and made that vote, then they're required to make that board.
But they're not the final. Once they go county, they're not the final, so they're just running the ship right now. They're just bringing it all to the table, trying to figure it out. Once that happens, then there will be a, a board, appointed board.
And this is when, in my opinion, we should be up there pushing the hardest to make sure whatever that final board looks like, Stewart is well represented.
And, and, but even on this committee, you think if they were wanting Stewart's input and they needed it so bad that you should have had somebody from Stewart on this committee.
I, so I think, I guess my preference i- in, in this moment at this meeting is, let's just take a step back and let's just reset. With the information we have now, I, if anybody has any questions, I would encourage you to reach out to Sean or Jotham and, and get the answer.
And please be aware, my decision was not just based on this. There's been some ongoing headbutting with Guthrie County and the City of Stewart for a very long time. You can take a look at our road out here, you know, and how long we have tried to get something, just some sort of help there. So it makes me very skeptical to say, it's gonna be great, it's gonna be kumbaya, we're gonna sit around, pull pants, sing songs.
Imagine how long it would have taken if Stewart wasn't even part of the conversation about the roads.
Guys, very.
Does that, I mean.
For ten years of conversations.
Right.
So conversations really, that, that's just my point is, we can have conversations. And I would love to have a better relationship with them. You know, maybe this is a different situation.
Well, here's our chance.
Than what they're dealing with.
You have a chance.
But I'm, I'm skeptical, I'm very skeptical of it, you know, um. I would say, who, who can go to these meetings?
They're, I, essentially they're public.
So they keep minutes?
Yes.
And the minutes are kept, where, where can the public come get those minutes?
Uh, that, I don't know. And you could talk to Jotham, you could email his, uh, what's her?
Be the auditor's office.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It'd be the auditor's office, board of supervisors.
Okay.
Now Stewart's not represented, the person who complained to your supervisor.
Wish they probably took that into consideration, that Sean was the one up there.
How many supervisors do we have down here? Do we just have one? Okay.
So I guess today, so what we have with everybody.
Well, I was just gonna say, Ash, you know, I don't know if anybody else is opposed to having a conversation. Um, but that's it. Like I said, when I got this, and I don't know, I think there's other people, after they took that vote, I mean, which again, I don't think we need to. You just go do your thing. That were concerned that we were giving our okay, that this proposal was a, even a blueprint that we were interested in. And I can tell you for one, I'm not interested in that. You know, just saying.
No, but just to be part of the conversation.
I said, I've even said, if they wanna tax and give the money to Stewart and Panora and let us decide what to do with it, we retain control, I'd be happy with that. You know? I don't see that happening, Mike.
No.
I don't see that happening.
It reflects me from Rob and Mike because I know his perfection. You wanna be part of the conversation with no comment.
Right, yeah, we don't, we don't. I, I would say you're not, you're not authorized, you know, to make a decision.
Yeah.
On, on anything.
But I wanna make it clear, because we can bully in the moment, that we will be part of the conversation with no comment. That's very much what I see in with someone.
No, you're, you're right, but I'd like to also hear what everybody else thinks too, because I, like I said, I know how I feel. Um, but I want you to have my reasons for why I voted the way I did and the way I saw it.
Highly agree, so we had a lot of, when in a part of the subject, and that's good, but it's a healthy discussion. And we wanna see if what Mike has in mind. I will commend what Mike has in mind, leave out the conversation with no comment. And just for him to attend and be now, he's at the point to come and report to us every time he goes there.
That's what I'd like to, when you come up and you say, you know, we didn't really discuss on some, somebody had a, just let us know what's kind of going on, you know?
And I think, you know, we're at the point now in these meetings and, and a stage with, with this that, that it's a lot more reasonable to come, you know what I mean? If we, if we just say, oh, we had a discussion about making this paper, well, you know, I mean, like, what, what does that matter to you guys? It doesn't. And so, but now we can say, well, you know, Panora came in and said this, Stewart came in and said this, so this is what we changed and this is kind of where we're at right now. You know, we can work to that because really, um, by, you know, we were talking about in the last meeting, by January, February is kind of what they're looking at as far as like trying to figure out. Because that's when we need to have, um, a solid plan really, if you will.
So they can put it on the ballot for next year.
Yeah, so it can be on the ballot, so the supervisors have time to do their, you know, they can't just wait their third reading, right? They have to do it, it's a certain amount of days between all this stuff. Um, and then also, cuz we, we need to go out and do education. We need to go to the cities and the townships and the people of the county and, and explain to them what's going on and why this will benefit them and, and those kind of things, you know what I mean? And so.
So I, I would go that.
And I would just like to engage my fellow council members' feelings on this, what do you think? Because it wouldn't be right to make a motion if nobody's even considering.
Yes, I, I was gonna say that, that we took it out.
I know it's kind of a reversal of what we did.
Do we need a motion? I don't see.
I think we have enough motion.
Yeah, I don't see a motion. Some and just like, we can put it on the agenda and they can give us a.
We need to put something in the minute that we allow the conversation, we allow the participation. With no comment.
Does the council have the ability to forbid a director from attending meetings? Or is that?
I'm not gonna look at it this way, if it's in the benefit of the city of Stewart, I usually ask him to attend.
Sure.
In the vast, I ask you to attend because the benefit of the store, because I have the same mindset like you. Exactly. I wanna be part of this conversation. Don't exclude me out of it. Because if you're saying something that I can defend the city or get my right, I want him to do that. And that was the direction to it specifically.
That was just one question I had, is if that was even within the city. That was just one question I had, is if that was even within the city council's purview to say to a department head who doesn't report to them, you're not allowed to go to these meetings. You're forbidden.
I'm not gonna go there, excuse me, I'm not gonna go there. You know, because I, yes, I gave him the direction to participate because if, if he's gonna represent Stewart, he's gonna represent Stewart and he's the only one who needs to represent Stewart because he's the only one knows, he's a director of the operation. And he did a good job until he come to the point that it became reality and the council needs to be involved. And look at what happened, we all kind of back and forth about it, but it's a healthy discussion. I respect your opinion, that's because it's mine, but you kind of read my mind about it. I want to be involved, I want to know what's going on, but don't force anything on me because the decision is here at the council. And that's why I accuse Councilmember Pampa too, that we're gonna participate, we're gonna divide the discussion with no comment.
Yes, it's the council's job to set the policy.
Sure.
So if the policy is X, then it's, and, and that is made through the council, then it's Ash's job to then follow through with that policy.
So the policy being whether or not we would join a countywide EMS.
Correct. True. That is a policy decision, that's not like a, you, do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely, that's not a person.
And I think there's some confusion there that, you know.
That's what I was just wondering about clarification.
This countywide service is a policy decision in which we're talking about.
But all the residents has got to vote as well.
Correct. But that will be on the ballot.
Correct. Counsel, hundred percent, that's, that's why we have a council. Those decisions. I guess my question was specific about the, the direction that Sean was forbidden from attending further meetings.
I think that came because it was a policy decision that night to stop conversation.
Oh, is that a policy?
Because we, as a council, four to zero, made the policy decision not to engage.
Okay.
That's for another day, that's, that's irrelevant.
We'll, we'll.
I mean, you're, you're asking.
Pull back to that.
That's what you're asking.
We're gonna go back to the subject here, which is, I would recommend that we do with Councilmember Cobal's opinion about it, that we participate, but not, no comment. Until it comes back to the council. And I see Councilmember, could you agree with that, how about?
Yep, yeah, good, let's listen to him.
Okay, okay. You're welcome, which is up to you. You don't have to, but it's heavy in the minute.
Yeah. It's gonna be.
But in the minute, it will be a decision for the, for the union to participate.
Thanks, Josh.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sean, yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, now, long-term patient, hey, estimate, Jim already left, so. Does he have any problems?
No.
Hold it up, Matt's gonna stand up.
Matt.
Matt. Don't know how this falls the line here. Everything, but you mentioned Jim and Womble update.
Okay, you're gonna give an update, Matt, Matt, you're gonna give an update?
Just a little bit of an update here, the.
Okay, just a second. We gotta move, move and check on that pay estimate and then there's update.
Okay. I'm all impressed.
So you're okay with.
So it's for eight hundred and seven thousand, right?
Yes.
Is this dealing with the, is there anything?
Marshall payment?
No.
Okay.
So, yeah, so.
Okay. Moved by Dolly, sent by Cobal, happy about Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cobal?
Yes.
Okay, now you got an update, Matt, on the. Yes, the Meconich will not be doing the concrete or any of the street paving this year. Initially, we were, that was their goal, was to have basically a done development. They've changed. So in my report, I've sent some information. It says subdrain piping, subgrade prep, paving, concrete, handwork, intersections, ADA ramps, sidewalk, backfield curb, vinyl grading, top level, three spread lift station will be done in the spring. So that's Jim's concern is that on the northeast second, there was a turnaround, but that's been disrupted because of construction. So minimum, he'd like to have a turnaround put back, so he wanted that brought up. So there should be a turnaround then. On the north end of it too, coming off the, the other north end. And then fencing, he wants gates or fencing to keep people from driving in through the. Off Marshall development.
Off of the White Hole Road?
Yes.
I noticed that they put a fence and a gate where the lift, they go into the lift station. That was put up, but there is, it is wide open where you go into the street.
So there and we're back.
Lots of people, actually, lots of people have taken their UTVs back.
So, so the problem lies with that is if something were to happen.
Yes.
Who does that liability fall on?
Sure.
And I know there's people with UTVs, ATVs, dirt bikes that see this as a prime opportunity.
Yeah.
Especially come the spring when it's wet, that's, that's a challenge.
Yeah.
Snowmobiles and the snow.
So.
So he's wanting to ask McAnish to put gates up?
Yeah.
Has he talked?
Now, he has, yes, there's been, conversation started.
Okay.
With Forrest, but Forrest isn't here. So, but before Jim left, he asked that, he asked if I was gonna be bringing this up and he mentioned the, the gates and the turnarounds.
And Matt, with, even if they put up gates, do we need erosion control so that mud isn't gonna come down on the highway? If they're not doing concrete this year?
Yeah, yeah, because initially they were gonna be doing grading, so.
Did they happen to say why they pulled all their equipment out?
Probably gonna go finish other jobs. Before Frost sets in.
The initial bid estimate was to do what was section one. And then a few weeks or a month afterwards, that section one got expanded. Basically, they tried to keep that deadline, but that added work was a, was a, that they are unable to keep that imposed, self-imposed.
So what happens if concrete goes up between now and then? Who gets to eat that cost?
I forced.
So that ends, so since they're pushing it off and supply, they have to eat that cost, not us?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so I'm just trying to do the best I can.
It's somebody, not us, or somebody, but could be us? Do we know?
No.
We don't know.
It'd be McAnish. McAnish being K. So like I said, I'm just doing the best I can and trying to.
No, I, I understand.
Two other people.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Good work.
Yeah. Me too. Two minute break. Oh, yeah.
For everybody. It's all for me. Justin, lock your chair up there. Randomly I got a message and somebody wants to know if they can follow during public forum. I just relayed a message. And you, and you're okay with that? So do you know that during public forum, the parents, nobody wants to? I don't know. The question is, I don't know, I mean.
Way he's narrowing it up.
Did you recall?
Hope somebody's in me.
I think settle. Stay a lot of reading. Storm spurs.
Oh, absolutely, yes. Oh, yes, I know. Actually, can we back up to Womble project update? I have a question, so I'm just asking.
There was a medical need, ask here.
Yeah, it was just a simple question, so.
Well, we're table and ten, we're gonna allow this map update again.
Was there something wrong with the Panora fiber thing?
No, we, I, we got hold of Matt Turner and he's busy.
Yeah.
Can't do it.
Right.
So we're gonna keep searching.
So you didn't want to go through with these people?
I would love to, but the council wanna.
But I think, sorry, Matt, but I think the question last month was, if Matt Tierney can do it, what would be his price? If he can't, then why not go with Panora?
Okay, he would like to do it.
He can't, he says he's too busy. He's too busy with his clients or that he cannot take on.
I understand, I was informed we had to reach out.
If you'd like to go with IP seven, the number ten, I would like to.
They did since last meeting.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the back, okay.
Yeah, I, I asked him in the grocery store and he said he was just way too busy. So I'm sorry, I was just confused on why we skipped it, because if Matt's too busy.
Can you turn on Mike?
Mike, if Mike is too busy, not Matt, Mike is too busy, then why wouldn't you go with?
If you need it, yeah.
Yeah, if you need it, if I was.
Who moved the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second is all. Who goes number ten? Second is seven. Second?
Who?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, so how do you go? Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cobal? Reslos?
Yes.
Okay, now, Mr. Matt.
Okay, well, I submitted my report. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any of that?
I have a question.
Okay.
So somebody just asked me if we, so for Womble one and two, on our city website, we have plat maps on the website. Right? Can we put, and we have it for all states, can we put the plat map up for the new edition?
It's, yeah, I'm sure that would be done. We don't have a plat map for it.
We're still.
You're still working on it. So the answer is, they're still working on it.
There's gonna be some.
But once it's finished, then we will put it on the website, correct? Good with that?
Yeah, so, yeah, being case, we'll have to finalize the dimensions and final measurements.
Somebody was just asking about it, so.
I'm assuming we'll do it the same way, where we'll put the map out and then a date in which you claimed the lot. I want to be the first. So now we've done that in the past.
Yeah, we have a process for allocating waters, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think the, the more of the question was just, they wanted to be able to see what the plat looked like.
I think the one thing we're really working on, the utility estimates, has been some negotiation. Farmers electric already seen it. We're getting very close. Hoping we could have it to the council in December, I would hope that'll happen.
They just wanted to see a picture of what it's gonna look like and where the locks are positioned.
So, yeah, nothing's been finalized.
To answer their question, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, I do, I would like to comment though on the Iowa Living Roadways Community Visioning Treaties Forever. For those that are on the steering committee, I think they missed quite a bit of information on the conference. It was quite informative, quite maybe educational as well. And I do want to add though, that we can still squeeze on a few more members of the steering committee. And we saw some room for a couple more youth as well, so I just wanted to put that out there.
When you say you, does it have to be a certain, like, does it have to be seniors or can it be juniors?
It can be.
Sophomores?
It can be juniors and sophomores, yeah.
Should I say a high school student?
Yeah, yeah. On that, so that's actually the only thing on my report, but since I've got a little bit of space up here on the podium, I would like to maybe get some, oh, do some clarification for the community. Today I was told that the city of Stewart has lowered the speed limit on the east end of town and the south end of town so that we can stick up cameras and we can make a lot of money off of our citizens.
Nothing to do with safety.
I just, I, thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that.
Cameras not going up there.
Cameras are not going on.
One of the interstates where you make big money.
But so, I just, just clarification though, that this was not done at the same time, was not connected. Three different things entirely.
It was proactive, instead of doing it really fast towards the end, it was done proactively. And you know what? I would like to thank the Stewart officers because they have been out there, I mean, they're not writing tickets. It's not, they're spreading warnings is what I was told. But they're out there making sure it's being enforced and making people aware. So it has been kind of, and it is a lot out here, it's really slow, take it three times a week.
I, I did have one person ask about, you know, sometimes that there's little red flags on the sign.
They're on there.
Not when I drove by.
Not south, not on south either.
I, I don't think that, because.
There's some on the interstate bridge going south. I, I, I know, I'm pretty sure I saw one set of flags going this way, right up the high school this morning.
Might be for the school.
And I, I only know this is because Jim was joking that the flags that he had to get, he had to bring home and have run modified because they were so big that they were out.
Well, I just, and the biggest.
But maybe more flags.
Yes.
I, I'm just saying.
Jim's working on it.
Yeah, my kid got, he got pulled out, oh, that's fine, you know, it's not problematic. There's no flags and I'm like, well, you should read the sign without it, but if that's, if that's something they can do, you normally, that's one of the big things like this.
I do think he's working on it, because he can't get these, he keeps getting these monster ones and then probably has to redo them. There is some on the interstate going south, just one set, and there's one set out here, I don't remember, coming into town.
So I'll just like to add then, flag, you know, that's a courtesy.
Sure.
It's not a requirement, or Jim is working on it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, twelve, I actually.
Okay, Stewart here is Director Sean of a possible close session. Councilman Christina asked her idea to be on the agenda and she has provided some confidential information that passed around. And we all are aware of the situation. And I will first give Sean the opportunity to go to close session if you would like.
Uh, no, thank you.
No, okay, so we are in an open session discussing this issue. If you just allow the council to read the information that I'm giving them.
Can I, is there a copy for me?
Can, uh?
No, no.
Okay. And I will best first page and second page was the whole of.
Hey, man, is this open session or?
No. Our attorney asked us to do it in a closed session.
Well, he doesn't want a closed session.
I don't know that we have that.
The, he would have to ask for a closed session.
All right.
And he has.
So how can you withhold information from him?
I, no, I'm not.
I don't.
Do you want him to ask?
I, I want all these, any single label confidential has to come back to me. I'm just giving you the situation from the beginning to the end, and then we'll allow them to talk, and we'll allow the council members, they've waited on the agenda to talk about it. And I will give a brief explanation without getting into details. So everybody understand the situation, and Sean will have his.
Talking about a couple of minutes.
Yes, and that's what I request from Sean to just give the council.
So there is a one formulary to, oh, this is such confidential, so I, I don't know at this point, Sean.
I will, I will personally have to defer to Ash on that.
That's what I defer, but I see.
Okay. I understand, I will. From what I'm reading. Without getting into a lot of personnel issues, we don't discuss personnel issues at the public meeting. There was a request from council member to go into closed session to discuss issues that happened by the director of the rescue unit. And she has certain things to say about it, who allowed to say that? And then I usually, on a small level, I do give legal advice on the request, and I follow the legal advice. You have those three things to look at. The concern from a council member, the legal advice, and the action I have to. You will give the council members opportunity to say.
Dawson, you got a question?
Just to be clear, the city's attorney, council member Renslow, asked for a closed meeting. The city attorney said, whatever this agenda item is, we handle it in a closed meeting. Sean has said, as I believe is his right, it doesn't, he's waiving his right to a closed session. Yet the council is going to discuss and move forward on an agenda item that he doesn't even get to read if, I guess I'm, I'm not clear on how that is allowed? And even if it was a closed session, wouldn't he be allowed to read the material?
No, because if they're getting legal advice, there's attorney-client privilege between Ash and his attorney. If it's potential litigation, then they can keep that secret.
So how do we?
Until Sean's, you know, if Sean brings it, I presume it's an employment litigation situation. So until Sean initiates or they initiate legal action.
So essentially, they, they're gonna review a document and I would assume make a decision about.
Ash is asked for legal advice.
Sure.
And Ash is sharing that with the council. Just like if he came to me for legal advice.
Sure, but then if I said.
I wouldn't share that.
But if I said, yeah, the opposing party's here, that's okay, let's talk about it anyway. Then, I guess I'm, I'm not sure what we're doing.
No, the opposing party does not get to make our attorney-client privilege.
No, I, but I, I can say, I, I see, I see your point, that it does, in that example, Sean's the opposing party.
I don't agree with this.
Okay, maybe he needs to have time to read.
Yeah, that's.
I was trying to be.
All right.
I just don't understand.
Like I said, he's doubted by a request from a council member, we got a legal advice, we need a legal advice. And then we have action. And he thinks a confidential will grab it back and then. But the request from a council member, the legal advice, and the action. I'll talk to you as he talks, as he reading. I, exactly what Ford said, it's just a lawyer and a line that pushes, and that's the only thing he doesn't know about. He will think the other stuff is a will, because somewhere he's hiding.
Everybody good?
Do we have page seventeen of the employee handbook?
Doesn't really matter at this point.
I have copies of the employee handbook.
I was just curious, cuz it says the procedure is set forth.
Um, so the procedure set forth in the employee handbook for on page seventeen is the.
Chain of command.
Okay.
Um, which I think it describes in there, however, here is, just, just for reference, this is not to make any decision, but just to reference some other stuff. In there, according to, I don't know, how many I got there?
I have.
Actually, I have a copy.
I have.
I have your job, see?
You should have a memory.
And it's just, again, it's just for reference, it's nothing, it's, you know, the employee handbook. If you wanna copy that, I can give you what, like, uh, no, it doesn't matter. It's just, it's just a reference to kind of, kind of back up what's in what Ash gave us here. Awesome, so.
Has everybody had time to read? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't, I, my opinion is, this has been settled, there's nothing more that we needed to talk about.
Ash?
Yes.
Are we allowed to talk?
Go ahead, he's talking.
And I can.
Do, well, you said on one specific issue, but not.
That issue that the, the, the letter.
The letter to the paper?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And do I need to speak to you or do I need to speak to him or does it matter?
For everybody.
Okay, I'm just, I'm making sure, cuz I don't wanna get yelled at, I don't wanna get attacked. So, as you know, you wrote an article to the paper as the EMS director, not as an individual.
Correct.
Do you see where that, that there's a difference there?
No.
Because if it was as an individual, you're covered by your freedom to speak and to say what you want. You chose to make that article as an employee of the city, spoke on a policy decision that the council made and spoke about. You made several references to the council in that, in that article, and several comments of other employees in that article. Now, you specifically called out certain people, which is neither here nor there. The article was about the council and how you viewed what that policy decision that we made, that we sat up here and talked about, that was on the agenda, posted plenty of time before, that's emailed to you, so you knew it was on the agenda, you chose to use the paper as that avenue, which is insubordination.
And?
And?
It's over, taken care of.
Sorry.
Okay, it's pointless, but maybe it's taken care of.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I. I have the right as a council person, I have the same type of chain of command that you do, correct? When you have a problem, you go to Ash. When I have a problem, I go to Ash. And if I don't get the answer from Ash that I'm looking for, I go to the mayor. And if I don't get the answer that I'm satisfied with from the mayor, it is brought to the council. Now, this in particular is not about anything you did to anybody underneath you. So it has nothing to do with personnel underneath you, because that is not my job. That is Ash's job. This has to do with you not following the chain of command and posting in a public article about the council, which again is insubordination in itself, and that should not be allowed. And to address your questions, if this article was wrote by anybody else or about anybody else, this would have been taken care of. So it's offensive that you sit up here and you made comments about, it was been taken care of. It, it's this, because if it was something else or somebody else, if we had an officer write an article about their supervisor, if we had a public works director write an article to the council saying, I didn't like the decision you made about the rock, he probably would have been fired.
That's not our job to fire anybody.
No, it's Ash's job.
And Ash did his job, it's right here, Ash already did his job, handled it.
So, and what date was this, the ninth? So we backdated it, because I have been asking Ash what's gonna happen. We're entitled to that information as council, just like we were entitled to other information that we were not privileged to that had to do with Ash, and if you read the code, the council oversees Ash, correct?
But we don't oversee department heads.
No, but we oversee Ash, and so if there's things going on in our city that require things, that inquires things regarding Ash, then we are privileged to see those things, but that didn't happen. So, my main reason tonight, and if they reprimanded you, that's, but I think it is very unprofessional of you to be so insubordinate that you thought you had to go to a paper and speak illie of this council who made a policy decision.
I don't think you was out of line, I read that thing, I, I was not at that special meeting. I went back and watched the video three times, I read the paper twice. And I, I'm not here to defend anybody, I will agree with you, he should have went through the chain of command. I will totally agree with you on that. But to sit here and kick him in the shins that, that he did something really wrong? Nah, he didn't do anything really wrong, um, he did state facts. I don't know if he was here at this special council meeting, I wasn't, maybe he just, he was on YouTube, I don't know. He did state facts, because I went back and forth from the video to the newspaper, there was facts in there. He did mention two council per, people's names, that I did see, I get that, I get where you're coming from. But he didn't slander, he didn't anybody towards those certain people. So, yes, he shouldn't have done that, he should have came to Ash.
The problem lies is the fact that the headline says, from your EMS director, that is an employee of the city. If you're gonna write an article like that, you need to write it underneath your personal name.
And Sean is quite aware of that.
There was a different process, yes.
Yeah.
You know, it's, that the assumption that I'm not allowed to have an opinion on what you guys do is completely wrong, okay? If the public works director doesn't agree with whatever you do with a rock or a road or whatever it is that he's overseeing, he gets to disagree with what you have to say about that. You know what I mean? Like that, so that's, that's what that paper article was about, was me disagreeing. It wasn't, um, you know, saying, and yes, I, I agree, should have done a different process, you know, we had a conversation about that, Ash and I did on Friday, the ninth, right? But the date, um, you know, and so, but that's, that, I wrote my feelings in there. And to have done everything would have taken a whole page of newspaper. And so, you know, I wanted it to make it very clear, because when you guys sit up here and say things that, that are sometimes very wrong, and, and they should, right? That's where they're getting their information from. And sometimes, you know, it needs to be said to them that that was wrong, that, that, that was not truthful information. And, I mean, I was responding to an EMS call at the time, right? So I wanted to be there, you know, and I could have said in the meeting, there wouldn't have been any article in the paper probably, I don't know. But like, you know, to be able to correct that information in real time, you guys kick things down the road all the time. You know, you've been talking about this traffic camera for a year now or more or something like that, you know? And, and I'm not trying to relate issues, but, you know, all he had to say was, you know, you know, I really don't agree with this, we need to get Sean here to meeting, let's do it so we can talk to him directly. That's all he had to do, and so it was my, my.
Your opinion.
Unfavorable opinion of what you guys did, it wasn't, I'm not gonna follow this policy or whatever, it was, I'm, that, that didn't sit well with you.
Those things have to be done as a personal opinion. To go say that stuff as a director or an officer, say it, it has, if you're gonna write an article, it should, there's.
I disagree, I, I mean, I'm a person.
There's reasons for this, and, and if we would have contacted an actual employment attorney, they would have been able to explain this to you. It is neither here nor there. The point is, is the fact that you wrote it as an employee of the city, it should have been wrote from your personal opinion. You want people to know what you think, then you put it under your personal name. I want people to know my side of the story, I would put it underneath my name, not as Councilman Renslow.
I wanted the people.
Do you see where the differ, the difference is there?
Yes, and I did it specifically because I wanted the people of Stewart to know what their director of EMS thought and my feelings on that. So it wasn't a personal opinion, cuz if it was, then we, I wouldn't even be standing here.
I guess she made her point, and she made her point.
You got enough of mine. Yeah, I just, you know, I'm not gonna get too far into it. As you know, according to the handbook, there's part of their cops that isn't supposed to mention that as a fire offense. Nobody can disagree with that through the handbook. I commend Ash for at least getting the reprimanded, that's fine, I'm good with that. I do agree that everybody has a First Amendment. Personal opinion. I can assure you that if I wrote a piece about my employer as an employee, I would not be working at that company. So what Christina is just saying is that I wish we had had this conversation like we had earlier tonight. Okay?
Right.
This is the second time I've had my name brought up in public about something that could have been handled with either a phone call or getting up in front of the city hall, uh, city council. And I'm tired of employees coming up here and saying bad things about me or even implying an infringement. I'm tired of that. How can I, how can I go into the fire hall now and, and work beside you knowing what you think about me?
Then, and so I, I just wanna.
That's my personal opinion.
It says nothing, you know, it's not personal, you know what I mean? Like that was a council decision, that was my opinion on a council decision, nothing about you personally.
Such you called my name. I guess such you called my name. Learning now from the whole issue, and I'm not trying to start the talk.
No, you're fine.
I mean, I'm trying to.
He's, 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 he's gone for now, I'm not gonna sit here and be, you got what you got, that's fine, uh, I'm okay with that.
Sorry.
But. I, I don't understand the, the need, uh, this is, this is one reason why people don't get any public service in my view, is that we will have people go out and either call them up by name or, and it wasn't just me, it was the whole council, you have to understand that. It was the whole council. Your opinion is just as valid, if you didn't agree with it, if you wrote it, you know, Sean with an A, whatever, this opinion on that, that's fine. But it does undermine the council, it does, uh, whether you agree or not, that's fine.
Yeah, I guess he agreed with me.
I just want to, I don't know, it's, it's gonna be a long process to get back to the same spot.
Yes, and I don't to you, Mike, I respected him, as we said. Yes, and I go on to you, Mike, I respected everything he said, and I want to hear that he heard everything he said because what's right is right, what's wrong is wrong, now it's time to move on, we all talk about it. And we will understand that circumstances happen, we just learn from our mistakes. We all learn from it and over, nobody's perfect. Not perfect, I'm not perfect, nobody's perfect, and we move on. He was very fully understanding of the situation. We talked for hour and a half over what he sees here, and we talked about it, but I have talked to him, everything is fine now. And I hope we all leave here with shit and on that subject, I hope so.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean. Just to add on that, I've worked with Ash fourteen years as mayor, and this isn't the first confidential thing we've handled. Okay. Okay, public forum.
Uh, Ash, don't forget that thing.
Yes, we have someone, yeah, go ahead and go.
No, I'll let Warren go ahead, I mean, I don't, because I don't know what that is about.
Who's, who's running this meeting?
Everybody.
It's every problem.
That's exactly what I want to talk about. Councilman Michael Kava, Councilman Christina Renslow, you're both wrong. And I'm saying that publicly. You have a problem with that? I'm, I'm saying it as Warren Barley, a, a personal citizen, a resident of Stewart. Now I'm saying it as Warren Barley, attorney at law. Does that make any difference? How many bosses do you have, this Councilman Kava? And that's a hypothetical question, you don't have to answer that because I can't interrogate you, it's public forum. I bet you wouldn't like it if you had five bosses. This is the, the way that you folks act way too often. Councilman Kirkpatrick called out the chain of command, that's the way it should work. Uh, Councilman Renslow said that your job is to set policy, that's spot on, that's perfect. But too many times, um, I'm going to pick on you, Michael, because I know you have broad shoulders.
Well, you can pick on me all you want.
I have a weak one.
Oh, well, I'll just pick on the left shoulder. You know, when our public work director comes up here and says, you know, we've selected, uh, uh, a software vendor to map the cemetery, and you say, well, I don't know about that. I would like to have all the companies come in here and give me. That not only undercuts our public works director, it undercuts our city administrator. You know, it's his job to make sure that the public works director is, is, uh, doing what he's supposed to do to get his ducks in a row. And, you know, if you have, hear complaints from the, the public, uh, you know, you should either direct the public to the city administrator or the deputy clerk or the mayor. Or, you know, if it's something that, that they need to be confidential, then you can direct those comments through that chain of command. But Sean Bovinette does not work for Christina Renslow, he doesn't work for David Dole. And but too often, I, I go to a lot of city council meetings. And Stewart's is the only one that I've been to that's run this way. You, you're a legislative body. If I could make this analogous to the state legislature, uh, it would be the, the state legislature passing a law saying that the Western Valley has to fire their superintendent. They could do that, but they're not governing, that's not their job. Their job is to set the policy, expect the administrative, uh, heads to, uh, do their jobs. And, you know, if, if the department's not performing, then they call them out. But this micromanaging is just getting out of control. And the mayor could do a better job running this meeting. You know, I, I learned parliamentary procedure in high school and FFA. And you folks are doing it wrong. You know, everybody just talks whenever they feel like it. You know, I'm not saying you have to raise your hand, you know, it'd be nice to have some kind of system where you're called upon. And, and then the mayor needs to cut things off when it goes on and off. And Dustin Tedcaps says the same thing for the third time, and it's time to say, you know, Dustin, we don't need to be here all night. If you made that point, you can sit down now, so I'm picking on everybody here of the.
Spreading around.
Spreading around. Um, I, I love you guys, Stewart's really lucky, it has a really committed, uh, public. We, we, we have great volunteers, we have great public servants. I agree with you guys ninety-nine percent of you, you're good, I'm pretty contrary, so, but you can do it better. And I'm, I'm hoping, you know, with a, a new council you're starting, um, you know, I'm not telling you, you have need to do an about phase, you just need to adjust your course a little bit, so, that's.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have one more.
I, I have something to ask. One thing Mason Hacey, I want to say, I don't know. Mason Hacey asked, asked if he could. Talk on public forum on a phone. And I asked Ash, because I was like. Ash, um, just as one follow-up thing, did the meal closing happen?
Yes.
It did?
Yes.
Everything went okay?
Yes. You're going to have all, Mason, she's.
I'm working on that, I have to.
While she's doing that, just want to, I, I appreciate that one, you know, like you said, I do have broad shoulders, I would make, I guess, I think everybody tries, strives to be the best they can, so maybe I'll sit down with you sometime and discuss some things.
Mason?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to put my phone up here in the middle so everybody can hear you.
No, you're good, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, Mason, this is Mary Cook, go ahead.
Hey, Mary, I, I was just trying to get ahold of somebody, I was having a meeting up there, I, I put it complex, I think. I think too many people are trying to put their irons in the pot on this deal, and I think there's a lot more at stake than just soccer fields and stuff like that. And, um, the bathrooms out there, they're, they're, they're a must, but I, I, so, three years ago, Clayton Scott and I took on that thing, and Clayton and I, Clayton got some receipts and I got some receipts, it was three foot over ten thousand dollars for that ten player field. From no fund me and, um, kind of what me put into it out of our own pockets. So I, our question is to the city council is what was the plan with, if, if the deal like, hey, we want to target the soccer field, we're, we're for that, what have we got to do? But it just looks so bad out there right now, what's the plan out there for the softball field and the baseball field the other end?
Mason, did you watch our council meeting at the very beginning?
No, I, 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 I saw some of it, but I, I mean, it's still one of those, one of those deals, I, I, this, this is pieces Christina, but.
I think if you watched the very beginning, I think that would answer a lot of your questions.
Yeah, I think specifically.
Do we have plans for those deals though down there? Because they, I think when people talk with Tim, when Tim was up there, I talked to him and I, we're talking about when it looks like kind of crap. And that, that's what we're kind of talking about, is there's grass going on all those fields, and you couldn't play on any of those fields right now if you wanted to.
Do you got any comment, James?
James Morgan's got a comment, that just matters.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hey, Mason, I think the one thing we kind of addressed that was close to you guys is, I think they're still going to look into those bathrooms close by just to see what can be done to them still. That's really all that was discussed, that we didn't talk about the conditions of the softball or baseball fields at all.
But I, 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 I just kind of, I, I, I'm just here kind of like thinking guys, I know, I talked to Christina about this, I talked to Mary Cook about this, I talked to Mike a lot about this, so, kind of like what they look like out there, and I think we all need to kind of, if you take a look, like it, it does not look good out there, and I just kind of, we can make it look better, it's actually soccer field, whatever that is, I think that's important.
I think they're working on it, Mason, I think the, kind of the discussion tonight was, we need to do the, the infrastructure, we need to get those core things finished first to see where that budget sits, and then whoever takes that group, whoever makes those decisions after that, what, after the spring, when Jim's done with all that and the extra money is down the road.
I, I, absolutely, I, I just, I, I just hope that people realize that Clayton and I have put a lot, a lot of work, just put a lot of time and money and effort out there in those fields, and we're here about all these improvements, and nobody's asked us a thing about any of it. So we're just, we're just kind of concerned on that, and like, we, we, we took on this project five years ago, and none of this would have been possible without that, so we're just kind of concerned about that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mason.
Thank you, Mason.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other counsel, I mean, in the public forum?
Uh, enforcement. Um, I don't know what's going on with Max and his, uh, report thing, but I noticed that my name was on there.
I saw that too.
That I apparently gave the okay, and I have Matt and Jim to vouch that Vince Kazinski called me because he couldn't get ahold of anybody and asked if I knew how to get ahold of Max and Jason. And if all I did was say, Jason, this is the person, can you please get ahold of them, they're confused. Right, Matt? You were in the car when I was on the phone, because I was driving, that's all that was said. So I did not give the okay for some code enforcement, and I don't think Corey Gisinger gave the okay on some, so, I don't know what's going on with Max and, I, I don't know. But you did clear that up, okay.
Barry else have anything on public forum?
I do.
Yes.
I do. I want to tell everybody.
No, I don't want to come up there.
You're not, Sean.
I just want to tell everybody that we started a thing at the park to light up the park, we started the decorations, the good egg still is waiting to everybody in town, right on the corner, as it's thirty years old, and that's a standard in our town. But the rest of the park will be lit up, and if any other businesses or Stewart utilities, I hope they're listening, that they would decorate their tree up there and do something for the park and light up the park. The night we're going to do it is going to be over Thanksgiving weekend, we're going to have the family stand the site, what they, what they have, have made or done. And then we'll have each family light up their, they'll plug it, they're displayed, and then we'll have cookies and, and hot chocolate.
Okay.
Nice, Bart.
Yeah.
Kevin, you have something?
About the thought, and maybe Warren can chime in, but is there a thought maybe you want a public forum at the beginning of the meeting so the public can voice their opinion on certain things you guys are going to bring up since you represent us? Does that make sense?
It's not a bad thing, I know the school board does it, and you're allowed two minutes.
I was going to say you can keep it real short, but.
Two minutes, is that what it is? Yeah, you, they have a public forum, you have to sign in, you get two minutes and you're done.
There's, there's all kinds of different formats for a meeting that we could look at, you know? We can do a public forum beforehand, or even on each item, you might have like a limited number of people that want to speak, you could do something like that.
I think we already have that.
Well, well, yeah, but.
But if you go into more of a, a formal thing.
Formal layout, which I don't disagree with, um, because as Warren so eloquently stated, you know, things do get out of hand and people are talking over and you got people yelling from the audience sometimes, which, you know, it, it breaks down the decorum, so that's a, that's a good point.
Like tonight, you probably wouldn't have anybody speaking beginning, but some nights it gets, there are some hot topics.
Right, and, and in addition to that, maybe even more detailed agenda items, uh, like the Von Durant lady showed us. Remember that, they have that detail, that way people in the public know what we're going to discuss, what it's about, and they might make a concerted effort to be here.
Or if they have something to say, they can say it and then they can leave. And they don't have to sit through a long meeting of a bunch of items waiting till the end so they can make their point.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Anybody else?
I see Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you, Warren.